Good, thank you. May we call the August 22 meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board to order with a moment of silent refraction, please? In the absence of Connie, who is excused this evening, Dr. Erdl, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
He'll be here.
Mrs. Muilfeld?
Excused.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
At this time, we would entertain public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to have a public comment? Seeing no one in the audience, we will unpleased to the consent agenda? Is there any Board member that would like to have any item on the consent agenda removed for comment or voted on separately? Okay, thank you. In that case, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Again, seeing no public present, Dr. Erdl, excuse me, a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Erdl, would you call the roll on that, please?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
We will move into the action items. Mrs. Fee, there's one item under Student Services. Would you take care of that, please?
It is recommended that the School Board approve the revisions to Policy 5112, entrance age, as discussed at the August 8 meeting, and I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Board members, any discussion? As read in the resolution, we did discuss this at our last meeting. Is there any community comment? Seeing none, again, roll, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Reports to the Board, Student Services. I'd like to introduce Teresa Kielkowski, and she has several guests with her, and if you'd introduce those when you begin. And this is to address Policy 5451.01, Academic Excellence Scholarship Revision. We welcome each of you.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Brian Hoffman, who is a counselor over at Wauwatosa West, and Cindy Carter, who is a counselor over at Wauwatosa East, representing the Secondary Guidance Department. Last winter, the school counselors approached myself and the Director of Student Learning about consideration for revising our current Academic Excellence Scholarship policy. So both Ms. Carter and Mr. Hoffman are going to share with you tonight what that policy is, what the Academic Excellence policy is, what their recommendation is for the changes and the rationale for it. So I'm just going to turn it over to them.
I'm just going to lay out a little quick history on the Academic Excellence Scholarship, and then Cindy's going to talk about the revision. The Academic Excellence Scholarship is administered by the Higher Education AIDS Board in Wisconsin. It's part of state statutes. It came about roughly in the early 1990s, and the scholarship is $2,250 a year, renewable for a total of $9,000. It was really meant to retain the best and brightest students coming out of the high schools in Wisconsin. So depending on the attendance of the high school, that determines the number of scholarships offered. So right now, both of our high schools are over thousands, so we're able to give out three scholarships every year solely based upon grade point average. So if we have a number of students with 4.0 grade point averages, we need to use a tiebreaker procedure to determine who those three will be who will go forward for that money. Students who accept that scholarship money must attend a university or technical college within the state of Wisconsin.
And the current policy right now for the tiebreaker policy just looks at the ACT score. And so in talking with the guidance staff, we discussed, well, is that the best way to tiebreak the academic excellence? And we came up with a different set of tiebreaking procedures, and do all of you have that in front of you? Okay. To promote rigor, and that is one of our district goals, we feel that the number of credits earned in AP Challenge or other college courses should be the first tiebreaker. That again promotes our district goals of having our students continue in the rigor. Then we would look at the number of academic credits earned, so that would, those specific areas would be the English, Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, and World Language. The third would then would be the number of overall credits earned, and then the fourth criteria would be the highest ACT or SAT scores. Most of our students do do the ACT. There are a few that would just do the SAT, and there is a concordance table put together by ACT and the College Board, and we would use that to convert an SAT score to an ACT. The final tiebreaker would be to kind of pull the names out of a hat. I can speak for East that we have used this, I think, almost every year that I've been there. This is my 13th year in the district, and we have used it almost every year. I know currently, we have a handful of students that currently have a 4.0 going into their senior year, so I know that we would, again, probably need to use this this school year.
And at West, we too have used it a number of times, and I can foresee right now, this year, we have a number of students tied with 4.0s again, and I think it will go into issue again this year.
And so just in summary, I think that our purpose here tonight is, again, I guess something that I find interesting about all this or exciting about all this is that the counselor is kind of owning what their job and role is in our school district and also looking at what our role is as a school district in promoting rigor for students, really seeing an opportunity where they can kind of build their practice and align it with our current district goals and initiatives. So that's why we're bringing the recommendation forward for you.
Board members, questions or concerns? How many, how long has this been in existence, and about how many scholarships have been awarded thus far?
I think roughly, my recollection is around 1991 or 92. What is interesting is that 2,250 per year at one time covered the entire tuition at UW-Madison. So that's where that number came from. So that kind of gives you an idea of roughly how long ago it was, because I think the current tuition at Madison's probably going to be around $10,000 a year.
And this is renewable?
Yes. So a student needs to maintain a 3.0, a 4.0 scale, the equivalent of a 3.0 GPA, every year to have it renewed.
And that it can be in any area, study area?
Including a technical college or vocational school. The institution itself is obligated to pay half of the money. State pays half of the money, and then the institution covers the other half.
Are there many that you know that have gone into the technical fields?
I'm not aware of any.
I'm not, I'm not either.
Do you have any follow-up on the scholarship? Do you hear from the young people and their successes, their progress that they've made?
Some, in some students that will come back, but we don't keep track of it once they leave.
And given this, these are our best kids, typically, they do make a name for themselves and go on to many great things. So they do come back and visit, we get feedback from them. Since it's been around since the early 90s, a lot of these students are professionals, hope they're making great impact in our world. They are our best kids.
Would be interesting to see where they, excuse me?
We can list alternates for it. That's why the tiebreaking comes into play, because, for example, say, our number one student decides not to go to Wisconsin school, they're going to go out of state. We can then pull up the next alternate on the list, and we have done that as well in the past.
You have?
Mm-hmm.
But that we have that for the young people. Is there any community comment? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
And we will go into superintendents. First one is District Technology Update. Jamie Price will give us an update.
Okay, thanks. I'm back again to give a quarterly update on where we are with technology in the district. I've got about 18 or 20 different subject areas to cover here, so I'll go through each slide reasonably briefly. Feel free to ask questions. What did we do over summer? Summer school support, obviously, is one of the primary objectives. As summer school gets bigger, the demand for technical support is added there. In addition to that, summer technology services is a big project period. Every year, 3,000-plus PCs are re-imagined. We form system-wide maintenance patches, updates, and upgrades. In addition to that, we did a bunch of other stuff as well, which we'll go through here. Google Apps. Google Apps was brought in last year, I did mention that. A training site was created for staff called gettingstarted.wauwatosa.k12.wi.us. The Mail migration, we were going to move group-wise over to Google Mail, was delayed. Through no fault of ours, Google made a change on their end, which they alerted us to the problem, but had we migrated, we would not have had a spam filter in effect, and that wouldn't have been a good experience for anyone. So rather than do that, we delayed the migration. That is tentatively scheduled to occur this weekend. We're recognizing significantly, a significant increase in teacher interest in Google Apps now, that they're starting to see what they can do with it, starting to see how they can share documents and really utilize it to a higher effect in the classroom. We're also exploring the possibility of student-staff in-house expertise teams. I did mention before that professional development is very important to the Technology Services Department, but in order to make that happen, we also need more bodies, and there is a vast or a large pool of expertise out there related to things like Google Apps, especially to how students would like to see it utilized in the classroom. So we're going to explore the possibility of putting a team of students together that would maybe coach teachers, provide them with some professional development, provide them with ideas on how they want to use some of these more Web 2.0 tools in the classroom. Online registration, to meet summer school registration challenges that we have every year, because there are a lot of factors that come in when it's tied in with the REC Department, we've been exploring some online registration opportunities with a goal of more optimally addressing the data needs for student learning and state reporting. As every year goes by, the needs on that side, from that, from the Student Learning Department, sorry, and the state increase, so the rigor with which we have to enroll students in summer school grows as well. We did identify a product. We've all sat through it, the REC Department, Technology Services, the Summer School Administration have sat through it and recognized that this product could be a very good solution for what we want, and we're exploring that further. Power School, we are not upgrading Power School. We did not upgrade. This is, usually, this is a report on things we have done. I did throw this in here because it's something I wanted to talk about. Power School is our student information system. The next version that came out had significant hardware costs associated with the upgrade. Now normally, we would accommodate that and just do it anyway, because it's such an important part in the district. It's literally the lifeblood. However, there's a state initiative approaching. The state of Wisconsin has determined that it's going to create a statewide student information system that will be mandatory for school districts to adopt over a certain number of years. So with that being said, we don't even know if we'll have Power School in the district in another 12 months or two years, so I'm not willing to really make significant investment in any upgrades or hardware at this point in time. Summer training, we conducted a lot of online summer workshops. We looked, we researched a platform that we could basically hold web-based training sessions. People could call into the district or call into an 800 number, and as long as they had a computer to get on the Internet, we could conduct some training and presentations. We did that twice a week over summer, actually, four times. It was twice a day, two times a week, and the training workshops were tied to Google Apps and Blackboard. We got good feedback on the platform. We're going to continue to use that throughout the year for professional development, and maybe we want to expand that to maybe departmental use, content curriculum use as well. District Web Specialist was hired in the district. Last year and previous years, we used to put a stipend to individuals in the buildings to maintain the school websites. We decided this year to pull back the stipend and redirect those funds to a part-time individual that would be here on a consistent basis. The Web Specialist was hired and is here four hours per day from 12:30 to 4:30, and that gives us a centralized resource that will be able to provide some consistency across all of our school websites and also introduce higher levels and greater frequency of professional development for our staff that will be creating their own faculty pages and so on. Elementary Library Media Coordinator. We know that last year, we restructured the elementary library media staffing. That individual has been hired. Principal interproductions are complete, and the relationships have been established there. The library catalog for the elementary schools has been consolidated. Now, elementary students will be able not only to access the books that are in their libraries, but if something's out, they'll be able to put a hold or put a reservation on a book in another library and have them shipped across via the centralized services through the elementary library media. The elementary library media aides, the candidates have been interviewed, positions offered, we're finalizing the hiring process now. The training is scheduled for completion prior to the start of school. E-reader initiative is underway. We've purchased a bunch of e-readers for each of the elementary schools. We did get some for the secondaries as well. They've all been catalogued and managed, the book list has been defined. We're just in the last steps of rolling that out as well. Microsoft licensing, their licensing has been restructured, so we're looking very closely at migrating the network over to that. We have already invested in the server, Cal and Virtual Desktop licensing, A, to remain compliant for one part, and also because when we bring iPads into the mix, we will be utilizing virtual desktops there. So if there's something that students can't do on an iPad, they need a Windows desktop for, we've got that service in-house where they can take advantage of that. The interesting thing about this is it's really quite reasonably priced, and if we do decide to adopt it across the board, that will then mean that we'll be able to upgrade Microsoft Office and Windows across the district, not only on district PCs, but also for the work-at-home agreement licensing that we have and keep up to date with latest versions. Internet, a new contract was signed for 2011, 2013. Time Warner, the previous or the incumbent, was the lowest bidder. That didn't come to the Board, because the price of that was actually far below what the tipping point is for requirement of Board approval. It was very, very cheap, and we actually got an option to upgrade at a reasonable cost. So if we do find in a year or so that we exceed our 100 megabit per second, we need to go to 200. We have a fixed price for 200 as well that is still far below what we've paid in previous years. And by the way, I'm actually, Time Warner was the lowest bidder, and that was the reason why they got it, but I was quite pleased that they did, because in the previous three years, we did not have one service outage that was a result of a failure on their part. Okay, product, I did bring this in here. We did have some trouble getting product in, primarily laptops and desktops, because of state budget uncertainties over the summer. Because of those uncertainties, a lot of other districts didn't know if they were going to have any money to buy computers and PCs and so on, and they ended up submitting their orders late in June or early July. Usually, most districts, including this one, will come to you in May and, you know, seek approval on PC purchases for July. That just didn't happen because of the state budget uncertainties, and as a result, there were significant product delays across all vendors, all major vendors. We did try getting product from others, but they're all in the same boat. That's sort of petered out now, though, and they're getting back on track. Social networking guidelines. We do have a couple of social networking guidelines in place at the moment specifically for Facebook and the use of Twitter in the classroom. However, with the introduction of Google Apps and some other things, there are significant educational opportunities out there, and there's increased interest as well from teachers in utilizing more of those tools. So I'll be working with Human Resources and creating a more broader in scope set of guidelines for the use of social networking tools in the classroom. They'll be revised, created, and then once that's complete, we'll bring them to the Board for a presentation. Human Resources, a document management solution that was approved by the Board a little while ago. That has been implemented and is in place now. Rapid Response System for one of the county locations that was approved by the Board recently. That solution has been implemented. Now, I don't want to take full credit for that. You know, the vendors did have a significant part to do with that, but they did require our support as well, specifically with the implementation of wireless access and the sort. Speaking of which, wireless access is still in progress. We have 90% coverage in needed areas. The remainder is scheduled to be completed by the start of school. We are also experimenting with guest and public access. We have increased frequency of visitors in the district that require Internet access, and we do have a solution in place where we can grant them temporary access for a specific amount of time and segment them off to one side of the network. What I'm really referring to there is student use, and that actually leads into the next slide, the virtual learning systems, and I'll refer back to that, guest and public access in a second. We closed out 2010-11 with about 1,600 students active in Blackboard. The majority, the vast majority of students that are active in Blackboard are secondary school students, because it's not really a platform that lends itself well to elementary students. So taking that into consideration, I would hazard a guess that we're probably at about 40 to 50% of students at the secondary level had some form of interaction with our virtual learning system. There is increased interest this year related to Blackboard from faculty, and in fact, we also have what's called a hybrid Blackboard, or a few hybrid Blackboard courses in development. Hybrid courses are ones where the virtual learning system takes a, they're still face-to-face instruction, of course, but virtual learning is not so much just a casual supplemental tool. It's used much more, with much more interest within the course. As part of that, we're experimenting with the acronym BYOD, which is called Bring Your Own Device, where the students in those hybrid courses will be allowed to bring in their own devices, whether they be smartphones, iPads, tablets, laptops, whatever they like, so that they can Internet, Internet, excuse me, access the Internet, access the Blackboard resources and whatever else the teachers feel are appropriate. And then also, the Blackboard Mask template, which is the template that we use to provision courses for teachers, was revised based on additional best practices that were learned and teacher feedback. Video security and access controls. All the hardware and software is installed and functional. The card creator is installed at the HR department, it is functional. System commissioning is scheduled for this Friday. By that, I mean that's when the card system actually goes live and doors start to get locked and so on. The principal and SRO training is tentatively slated for the second week of September. I don't really want to train them in the first week, because they're going to have their hands full with just the start of school. We'll wait until things calm down a little bit. Administrative guidelines were compiled, and they were included in the packet. Excuse me. The last slide that I have is the, sorry, Mobility Initiative. 1,000 iPads were upgraded and imaged over summer. I've got to make a comment here that when Apple created the iPad and released it to the market, they did not intend for it to be an enterprise-level tool. It was a consumer device. It was meant for you and I to take home and use at home on a casual basis. As a result, centralized management that we find that we can do with PCs, et cetera, is significantly more complex with Apple, because it wasn't meant to do that. There are solutions now that have been created to allow that, but needless to say, the management of 1,000 iPads or getting them all upgraded and imaged and getting all the applications purchased and installed and ready to go was actually quite a task and quite a learning experience for the Technology Services Department. So much of a task that we actually hired a couple of students over summer as well to help us with that and help us with some of the labor. The centralized management was implemented. We also included some content filtering with the iPads, so that when the students take them home, while it is still strongly suggested that the parents monitor their students' usage of the devices, they will be subject to the same content filtering that they're subject to while they're in the district with relation to offensive sites and offensive material. The cases for the iPads are shipping, they're due to be delivered this Friday. Because it was such a large order, we actually had to talk to the factory in China and get the order special made and delivered. The carts have been acquired and deployed, so we have four carts, as well as the individual iPads that are going to the students. We have a cart at each secondary school that has 30 iPads in it. They've been deployed already. The agreement, the student agreement and guidelines have been defined. The insurance options have been defined. Faculty training is complete, so we had about 20 or so teachers that are involved in this initiative that will be teaching the students that receive these on a one-to-one basis. Last year, just, oh, actually, it was just at the start of summer break, we brought some outside trainers in, and we had everybody come in and spend two days working with the trainers and learning what they can and can't do with the iPads. As part of that, we're also conducting a measurement and effect study on the effectiveness of iPads in education, or should I say tablets in education. That study is in design at the moment. We're just going to wait until the school starts, because there's other stuff going on right now. But we are working with Wisconsin Lutheran, myself, or Technology Services and Student Learning will be working with Wisconsin Lutheran College to baseline and study and analyze what sort of effect these devices have in the classroom. So with that being said, that's actually the last slide. There's another one called question, but I won't bring it up now. I did want to just bring an iPad up onto the screen and show you. These are the cases that we're getting. They're full of memory foam. They're not the most attractive cases, but these have been rigorously tested. There's memory foam inside them. You can literally bang your iPad around, and it doesn't damage it. Oh my God, no, kidding. And really, for student use, you know, we put these, we put these between books and squash them, and I even had my daughter sit on one to make sure that it didn't break the iPad. We think these are pretty good. That's why we had to do a special order and get them in from China. One of the major complaints about cases for these devices is that they're not sturdy enough. So I'm just going to switch over now to the iPad and give you a brief demonstration. One, second. You know, I tested this.
Probably worked before you banged it on the table.
Yeah, seriously. Yeah, seriously.
It's been rigorously tested.
Yeah, it's been real. Thanks. Maybe I'll...
Do you want a little more light?
Here we go, here we go, hey! Okay, so every iPad, as you can see, has, depending on the school that it is, has the school logo on the back. We also, on the lock screen, we have the acceptable use policy that pops up so students are aware when they turn this iPad on and open it up that it's a district device and they're not to abuse the privilege. What I'm going to do is just take you through a few things here. This is the content, this is actually the browser, the content filter that we have. We will be disabling the default content, sorry, web browser on there, and they'll utilize this one instead. And by doing that, we can actually then filter internet-based traffic through our content filters to protect our students. We have an application on all of them called Office HD. Office HD allows students to connect to... Oh, did it turn off? Got the whole thing turned off, didn't it? Okay, well, it's cool, anyway. You know what, it might be that application. Yeah, that application just doesn't display. Actually, we might be limited on this, I did bring this up, but I didn't test all the apps. Let's see, a couple of things that they have, you know, we had all of the classes, all of the teachers went through and they found a lot of applications, they wanted, the majority were free. We did have to purchase some, but I had allocated some funds for that. You can see here, this is for one of the psych classes where they want to explore the brain, they just bring up 3D brain anatomy, you can start tearing away the segments and getting closer and closer and moving things around, sort of neat, right? One of the things that I think is good in the math department is, or good for demonstration purposes, actually, is Statistics of the Union. This is an application that actually takes live statistics from anywhere in the state, anywhere in the US. For example, we can look at Milwaukee County and look at all the demographics, these are live demographics from anywhere in the US. So how valuable is that in a statistics class, right? There's just a wealth of things that teachers have found out there. WarfromAlpha, I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with that, but WarfromAlpha is really an incredible reference tool that just really looks for anything out there that you can think of to do with science or math. Online encyclopedias, there's, one of the teachers has a Discover the US, one of the social studies teachers, has an application called Discover the US, and kids are touring the country, not just looking at pictures, but watching videos, live webcams, all sorts of, all sorts of stuff. One of the nice things is PI-83 graphing calculator. Now imagine if you're in a class where you are required to purchase, say, eighty or ninety or a hundred dollar calculator, this one, which is probably isn't going to display, it's on the iPad for you already, and it's a ninety-nine cent app as opposed to a ninety-nine dollar calculator, right? Science I showed books, so this just gives you like a little bit of an insight. Of course, we've got Blackboard up there and some of the other stuff like email, Google Apps, et cetera. So with that being said, that is the end of the presentation, and I would now take any questions.
We'll wait till the light's gone, then we'll... Okay, board members, questions? Yes, Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Price, has the state given any indication of their timeline for the information system that...
Yes.
Would replace our Power School capabilities?
Selection will be made at the end of this year, and they're looking to migrate the first of the districts over July this year. I don't want to speak out of turn, but from what I understand, it's July of 2012. So, but they have given like a five-year window to districts to migrate, so first they're going to take care of some priority cases, which in effect is Milwaukee Public School System, who I believe does not have a contract right now with a student information system, so they need to move as soon as they can. Suffice it to say, I would, being as it's mandatory, I would encourage the district to do it straight away. Bite the bullet, get it over and done with, and move on.
That was the question I was going to ask, have we been approached, or can we approach them?
No, I approached them.
You did.
I already have.
And I was going to inquire as to your opinion about go early or go late?
Yeah, I'm not really, you know, like I said, currently, if we want to upgrade Power School, which isn't the most popular application in the district anyway, we would have to invest a reasonable amount of funds that I don't really see the point if the state's going to do this. You know, we might as well do it now.
Do you need any support from the board to get involved early?
No, I did actually speak to one of the representatives that's heavily involved in that, in fact, I would even go so far as to say leading it, and expressed our interest. I did, of course, check with the superintendent and with Student Learning first, and I believe that they're both of the same attitude that, you know, whatever it is, we should do it straight away. So I expressed that with the state, and while I didn't get a definite check in the box, there was an indication that we could be included, that they're looking for early adopters.
Do they have a steering committee that they've announced?
Yes, it's been in place for probably a year, six months, twelve months now. So it's already done.
Oh, so we couldn't get you on the steering committee, huh?
I think they're actually on the verge of selecting a product. They're not creating the product themselves, they are going with a third-party platform. So they may very well pick Power School, but there's only like three or four major players out there, and I would not hazard a guess or want to hazard a guess as to what platform they would pick at this point in time. It would be nice, though, for us, because it'll be all off-site, much like Blackboard for us is off-site, much like Skyward for us is off-site. Our student information system then would be hosted by a professional hosting company, and all we would really need to do would be connect to it like we do with these other services. Of course, we still have the administrative responsibility of, you know, maintaining users and so on, but the actual hardware and server responsibility would no longer be ours.
If our early participation would involve some of your hours, would that be acceptable? I hope.
I would certainly think so.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, early participation, maybe in a pilot, maybe in a first rollout, would take a lot of your time, of course. But you have a lot to contribute.
Everything else does.
Right, right. But that's okay, I hope that's okay, just so everybody knows going into it.
Well, I'll be totally honest.
Yeah.
You know what the history with Power School for us has been like.
I know the history with this.
We've been on the verge of moving away. So this is something that's been out there for a little while, anyway, so there's nothing going, I've got nothing going on.
Okay. Those projects, you know, are kind of like getting involved on the school board, you get involved a little bit and suddenly you're consumed, so...
Yeah, we've already done it once.
Yeah, so I...
That was quite a challenge.
Suspect your contribution would be of great value to their effort, and if you're in on early configuration, probably it may facilitate our success as well. Thanks.
Further board questions, Mr. Kroner?
One question I had was about the security system, when we put that in last year, I was concerned, I understand the need for and agree with it, but I was concerned about access to people that weren't part of the school system. I'm really pleased with what you have written because I think they're really good controls.
Thank you.
That allow the police or the firemen quick access, but not any other type of access. One question I had is, in an emergency situation, that the superintendent can give an oral "okay" for a fire or police to look at video, but if the superintendent is off-site, is there an automatic second or third designee, like if your superintendent's out of conference or something?
I believe, I believe in our policies, the business director is the superintendent's representative or voice when he's not available.
Okay, so if it doesn't say that here, there is a...
I think it says "or his designee" in the, at least what I read through, I think it does state "or his designee."
Well, not in the emergency section, that's what I was asking. But that's fine, if there's a normal flow, then that's good.
Is that it? Okay, any further? Yes, Mr. Meyer?
You know, starting with the biggest district is probably not real wise for the state if they started with a small district that was very close to Milwaukee.
And do it for free.
And do it for, well, but actually, seriously, with rollouts, to start with the biggest bite first is, you know, better to shake out the problems on a smaller chunk.
They're, I believe, the state and the committee that is involved are, oh, excuse me, more than halfway along the trail, so...
Okay.
You know, rocking the boat at this early stage is, at this late of a stage, is probably not something we'd be able to do.
They won't be receptive to input at this stage.
No, no, they've been working on this for quite a while. They've only really made the public recently, but...
Okay.
I think the entire state of Texas just went with Skyward. So there seems to be a lot of state options going on.
Wisconsin's not the first state to do this. In fact, there are, I think there's probably about fourteen or fifteen states throughout the US that have implemented statewide student information systems and apparently have recognized some good success with it. One of the nice things for us is that because they hold the data and they hold the databases, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the issues or challenges that we face come year-end or year-start is that the state suddenly decides they want a certain field in a report or the format needs to be in a certain way. Things like ISIS reports would be totally gone, you know, we wouldn't need it anymore because they would have direct access to it, they could get the data that they wanted, and it would alleviate the burden on us significantly.
Okay. I had a question today from a community member. The library media specialists were in place to help the teachers with technology in their classrooms. Did you get involved at all with that and how that would be handled?
Yes, I did.
Can you go into just a little detail, there was some concern expressed that who's going to be there to help the teachers if they had questions?
We still, we still are providing a stipend to what's called a multimedia coordinator in the buildings, so there is an individual in each building that is paid a reasonable stipend to provide local support. We're also, as I mentioned in this slideshow and others, really enhancing our professional development opportunities within not just the Technology Services Department, but also within other areas, within the district, within student learning, and the library media, elementary library media coordinator, of course, is going to be there. We also have, like I mentioned, the centralized web architect. So there are several initiatives underway to ensure that the teachers are going to get the support that they need and then some, and more. It's very much a focus of what we're doing.
So that person is right in the building and can be called on because emergencies come up?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Very informative. Dr. Earl, Compensation and Policy Committee?
The board has two committees that have been looking at different issues related to the changes that have come forward as a result of the state budget and Act 10. One of the committees, which is the Policy Committee, has met several times and, most recently, prior to this meeting, and will be having some recommendations on policy changes related to staffing that will be brought forward on Wednesday. The information should be sent out to board members tomorrow at some point, the policies and the suggested or recommended revisions. I think what generally what you're going to see is, I think, the approach has been to, we need to get these policies in place, there's not major changes to the policies. Some expansion of policies, some deletion, so we don't have duplicate for professional staff and for support staff. We just, we had three thousand series and four thousand series, and we're just going to one series and making the changes on those policies. But generally speaking, the recommendations are not major changes to benefits and at this point in time, and I think the key is that we get this year started, we get inclusion with other staff members involved in the process. But I think the committee has gone through and will have some recommendations that I think I know that, which will be on Wednesday. And then the following Monday, which is a week from today, vote to approve those policies so we can get those in place in the handbook and then get ready for the start of the school year on the first. The Compensation Committee, I think, has been, we had one meeting with the Compensation Committee, and I think everybody realizes the complexity involved in the development of a compensation system for staff members. I think since the changes have come about, I think there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of communication about possibilities for compensation, how do we do it, what could it look like, how do we get the best performance out of compensation? And I think the meeting that we had last week with the consultant from Denver that came in to share his insight with us on compensation and compensation, different types of compensation systems for schools, his name is Phil Gonring, and he's from the Rose Foundation, he was involved in the development of the Denver Pro Comp system. But I think through his presentation, and I know I sent the PowerPoint out to all the board members, but there was a couple of points that certainly I think that he made that are very clear, and I think the changes in the labor market and expectations of schools make change a necessity. The current lanes and steps that we use or have used up to this point was a result of discriminatory practices back in the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds, and it became a result, it came about as a result of discrimination. And it really is a time to move away from that. There's not, there's not research out there that clearly points to any improvement in student achievement based upon teachers being paid more, in other words, for more years of experience or for a master's degree or other credits that are added. I think one of the most interesting points that he made about compensation is, clearly there's no research that says that improves student achievement, and to this point, there's been no compensation that compensates for other types of performance by teachers that shows it improves student achievement. He said, "So considering that equal, wouldn't you want to pay people for what your district's goals, objectives, and focus is and have it aligned to that?" And I think that just made a lot of sense. We are market-driven, there are some positions that are hard to staff, and some schools, not necessarily in our district, we have schools that are hard to staff, but we certainly do have some positions that are difficult to staff, we don't have the deepest pools. Another point he made, a system that rewards individuals for a particular activity will likely attract and retain those that are very good and drive away those that are not. And that's why I think it's really critical that we get the incentives right and we get it done right away. And if we really step back and look at incentives and trying to get the right people to help us determine what type of incentives are going to get people to come to our district, the best people come to our district, the best people to stay and work with our kids. And it's not just the compensation piece, and I think part of what, and I know Mr. Meyer will have some comments as well, but looking at the committee and trying to step back and say, we need to have teachers involved in this development. I think we're short-sighted if we don't involve our teachers. If we really want to know what drives them, I think we just need to ask them. And we need to do some work with our teachers in the development of any kind of compensation plan. We've bargained over a long period of time to get where we're at with ours now, it doesn't mean we have to get away from a relationship with our teachers in the development of it. And I think another point that he made, it's critical to have buy-in, buy-in into that compensation system. Because if we want teachers to drive for the best and push their best forward, we need to have the buy-in of it. And I, I think there's just a lot of different reasons of why we need to do that. He also talked about, I think it was five different compensation systems that are out there. The Denver's Pro Comp system, which I think is widely recognized as one of the most successful systems. But, um, the comp is compensation, not complicated, but it is an extremely complicated system. And I believe they have a lot of people that manage that whole system. Michelle Ree, the former superintendent in Washington DC, the Impact Plus, um, is a two-tiered system. Those that can be assessed and those that can't, and I think that's another challenge. Teachers that teach English, they can, you can look at their student achievement data and you can recognize that. And I think there's a reality for some of our other fields that it's tough to assess student growth. And I think that's been the struggle throughout the country when people look at compensation systems for pay. The Teacher Advancement Project in Chicago, Baltimore has a career pathways. It's somewhat based on achievement units. So you get units and you can build up a certain number of units and it's a little bit different than the credit model. Uh, and also Harrison Colorado. All the previous districts I mentioned are larger districts. Harrison Colorado is similar in size to us and they had a different system, a performance system that was put into place. Theirs was not voluntary. Every teacher in the district was placed at a particular level and they were able to move up based on certain metrics and certain achievements. So I think the thing to remember is there is no perfect compensation system out there or everybody would be doing the same one for, for compensation for performance. I think we just need to go through and, and look at it. And I guess my recommendation is that we have, that the board charges the administration and myself to get a group of teachers together, um, or a committee together and start doing that research to bring something back for the board's consideration in the future on, on performance pay.
In addition, I'd like to just add, um, there were several of our board members that were able to attend that meeting and it was a very rewarding, very informative meeting. And we had extended an invitation to Greendale School District and there were, I think, at least five or six people from the Greendale Board. And that was, I, I really liked that collaboration that we're able, that building relationship that we have amongst our school districts. Board members, questions or comments, please? Mr. Meyer?
I agree that buy-in of the employees is critical and that the contribution of the employees is critical. I am uncomfortable with the idea that we will have a committee of teachers as we did with the scheduling effort and have only one set of stakeholders at the table or have the effort dominated by a single group of stakeholders. I'm believing that first and foremost, we need to know what our, we need to establish our goals and our priorities in order to know what we value. And I think that's fundamentally a full board activity. I, um, was struck by what Mr. Mack said at the end of our first meeting. Actually, there were two meetings. The second meeting was the consultant who came in. And then the decision needed to made, needed to be made, what to do after that second meeting, the second meeting being the presentation by the consultant. But the, um, unsolvable, almost unsolvable puzzle is that as a practical matter, there will be no additional money next year. So there's no additional money to give raises, substantial raises to anyone unless other people receive less money because the pie does not grow bigger. And, um, and Mr. Mack, if I'm misunderstanding your words, please, please speak up. So the idea that we know our priorities, you know, know our goals, know our values and that we determine a compensation model in alignment with those, that the courses we teach are the ones that we want to teach, um, you know, various decisions like that. So, uh, but I'll go back to, I'm not comfortable with getting together a committee of teachers to tell us what we should do.
Okay, further, Mrs. Randall, please?
Um, I am not either, but Dr. Earl, that's not what you meant, is it? A committee just of teachers?
No, I mean, I think there's other, there's other, um, I mean, one of the things I'm looking, is looking at involving or, or using Phil Gonring. I think he's got a body of knowledge that is extensive and I think we've made a good practice of using people that have expertise outside our district, but certainly not just a group of teachers making decisions. I think there needs to be an input, um, from teachers and whether it comes through our district. And I know I said, I did make it very clear and say a committee of teachers. But whether it's the district, so, um, a district, our district advisory committee, which I'm, is part of the, the district development plan, um, to institute that group and maybe using that group for the feedback mechanism on a compensation system. I just think there's, there's, we have to have the involvement. And what that exactly looks like at this point, I, I certainly don't have that worked out. But clearly I did say a committee of teachers.
Mrs. Weber, may I add?
Yes.
I truly believe, um, our superintendent has some very good ideas and that the strategy should be to try to get input from the various stakeholders with regards to your ideas, Dr. Earl, that I think you really know what to do. It's a question of tailoring it so that it's, it's, it's acceptable to everyone. And then you'd want a lot of teachers in the room and some parents and some board members and things like that. But from our conversations, I'm absolutely sure that left to your own designs, you, you'd lead us in a good direction.
Thank you. I, you know, and I, to, to oversimplify it, and I'll attempt to do it. I, I think there's three simple goals for a compensation system. And I, it's hire and retain the best staff. Pay high performing staff at a higher level and fit within the financial structure of district of our district and projected future funding. Now, that's certainly oversimplified, but I think that's really what we're constantly driving at. We want the best going into education and coming into Wauwautosa and we want those best people staying and teaching our kids. And we need a clear cut way to identify that. We know that's complex, um, so.
Yes, Mary Jo.
Um, I did attend the presentation and, um, I, I like the idea of having Mr. Gonring facilitate, if that's possible. There was such a wide range of, um, possibilities from those five models. You could have pulled several things from each of them and put them together. That was, that was one of the nice things about it. And through listening to that and asking questions, it became more and more apparent that, you know, this discussion about test scores, it just, it doesn't work. It cannot be just a measurement of test scores for, um, multiple reasons. That can and should be, or some type of student achievement measurement has to be included. But it's really a much bigger picture. And therefore, and to Mr. Meyer's point, it has to be a bigger group of stakeholders. It can't just be administration, it can't be a board, um, it can't be the staff. It has to be everybody coming to the table with what they know about their responsibility in this and sharing that and, um, and then having somebody put forth a plan. I asked him at the end, I said, "What is the board's role ideally, you know, in this?" And, and they said, "It's to charge the superintendent, um, with the task of coming up with a compensation plan that meets, um, the goals and objectives set by the board for our district." So hopefully, um, and I, I know we've already been working on that, uh, talking to different people. But, um, you know, this is brand new for everybody. And I think this, there's fear on some people's part that it would be too narrow if you go just with student achievement from year to year. And so there's got to be a willingness for people to, um, listen and to speak and to compromise and to try new things. And that was another point. I know that we all got the PowerPoint and one of the ten lessons at the end was, "Don't be afraid to make mistakes. If you make a mistake and then you figure out that's not working, then you go back and fix it." But, um, to keep, to keep trying. So I thought it was an excellent, um, presentation.
Mr. Kroner?
I didn't quite understand your proposal. So as treasurer, I'm a member of the compensation committee. Are you proposing to disband that committee after one meeting?
Two meetings. I am proposing to put it in hiatus at this point.
So I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, the board had decided to create the two committees and charge them with certain tasks. I would be comfortable with adding, uh, a few teachers or some parents or other stakeholders to that committee. But I'd like to see that committee, including board members, come up with a compensation system. I think that's what we started to do. If the full board decides to move in a different, different direction, that's one thing. But I don't feel comfortable disbanding that committee so quickly without actually having a chance to do any work.
Further comment, please? I like very much any discussion we've had. Dr. Earl, you always use the term, "all the stakeholders." That means all of our employees. It's not just teachers. And I, I, you, most often you will say, "all stakeholders." So I, I take you on your word at that. I appreciate your comment, Mr. Kroner, but I would have to hear more discussion. I think we're moving in the right direction with that it's, the committee that was charged, I think, has completed the beginning, but I think we need to move beyond it. That's only my opinion. And I'm very much open and encourage anyone else, any comment, to give direction to Dr. Earl. Okay, seeing none, we may, we will have further discussion. We can come back. We're coming back on Wednesday night for further comments. So we can always hear that, at that time.
Excuse me.
Yes.
So we're not determining whether or not the committee is disbanded?
Well, that's up to the board. That's why we're here. Mary Jo?
I'll just add, and I think I said all of this, but I think it became clear in, in the committee meeting and much clearer in the presentation by Mr. Gonring that this is not something to be tackled by three board members and, or throw in a couple of extra people. It's huge, it's time consuming, it's, um, we need the knowledge of all these other people. And we need a leader, which is our superintendent, to, um, to take us in the direction that we're asking him to. So, um, this, you know, committee of three, it, it obviously wasn't working and, um, again, based on his experience around the country and the five different models, it was never done in that tiny little, little microcosm of a group.
And we need to give credit. It's not just Dr. Earl, Mary Jo, and I think you would be the first one to support me in that. Mr. Chanan has given a great deal of input, Mr. Mack, Beth Ehrenberger, Teresa Kukowski, all of these people have been at the table at some of the meetings. And so I think it's not just Dr. Earl, we're talking about the district again. And you hit your hand up, Mr. Kroner?
Yes, um, I just want to clarify, we had one committee meeting and then, then the meeting with Mr. Gonring when I was out of town and couldn't attend. The board members aren't the only committee members. There's three, board members are a minority of members on that committee. There's six or seven or eight committee, committee members. I forget exactly how many there are. So this isn't simply three board members deciding something. It's three board members being part of a larger committee. And I would suggest that as board members, we represent the largest constituency in the district, which are all the citizens of Wauwautosa. So I, I think they're, they are, it's their due to be represented in that committee. And second, I take exception with your judgment that that committee met and didn't work. You weren't at our first meeting, so it's, it's not clear to me how you would make that judgment. I think we're fully capable of analyzing the situation and coming up with a fair compensation system to present to the board. Or maybe we'll meet longer and then decide that it's not something that we should tackle. But I think it would be unfair at this point to decide that this committee can't make determinations in this area.
Yes, Mr. Meyer?
My perspective is that the choices are strategic in nature and will fundamentally affect how we compensate employees. And if the superintendent has a direction that he prefers, my preference is that he put that down on the table for the whole board and then, working out of details, be sent back to committee. But after hearing what Mr. Mack had to say about the nature of the choices we have, that was when it became my opinion that maybe, perhaps the full board didn't really understand the, the depth of the choices that are in front of us. The idea that there's no additional money as a practical matter. I mean, small amounts, but not amount, enough of consequence when our whole construct in the past had relied on a, a certain percentage of additional revenues every year. And we just won't have that now. So where in the past, everyone could win, for there to be change in the future, there, for there to be any winners, there have to be some losers. And, and those are pretty, um, dramatic, I don't know if dramatic is the right word, pretty sobering decisions. And I, I would want to be sure the full board understands the nature of the choices being considered before we go. And then have the full board be comfortable with charging us with decisions or recommendations of that nature. It's not just a tuning endeavor, it's a, um, a, a set of strategic choices. And, and so that was just my view of it, about why it should go back to the full board and then perhaps go, then be sent again to committee.
Yes, Mr. Kroner?
I agree, it's what you said, Mike, but the only thing, different view I have is with Mr. Mack's telling us the amount or lack of the amount of money we'll have to come up with a complex salary structure. To me, that didn't provide more depth to our decision-making, that made it much shallower. In other words, if we do not have any more money over the next several years, the complexity of the systems that we come up, can come up with are going to be severely restricted. So you, you know, you had made the comment that if we're going to pay some teachers more, we would need to pay some teachers less if we have fixed amount of money. That's true. Another option would be to have fewer teachers, to have more salary money to move around to different individuals. So if, if we have a restricted amount of money, that seems to me to restrict the number of choices that we have as far as compensation goes.
Well, the fundamental question of layoffs or pay cuts is of a depth in seriousness that I would want to bring that to the full board first before we pursue either analysis of details of either one. I wouldn't want to go to a pay cut analysis and come to the board and have a majority of the board say, "Well, no, we don't want to do that. We want to have layoffs, so go back and try again." That's, that's the kind of thing I mean.
Mary Jo?
Um, I, I would request that Dr. Earl bring something to the full board for consideration and then, as needed, back to the committee. I think that's what you were saying, Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Yes, I would, I would feel much more comfortable having that. And again, it's after listening and, and, you know, with restricted funds, to me, you have to be much more creative. So I don't think it restricts you. It, it, it challenges you to be more creative and to have more voices and to have more ideas and to have more thoughts and to have those from people that are experienced in the education world. So, but, yeah, as a board member, I would, would prefer to have it handled at the full board level and then back to committee as, as we deem necessary at that point.
Board members, yes, Ms. Durrell?
How much time do we have to implement this thing? Phil?
Well, there's, I think there's two different ways to look at it. We have to have something in place for next year. We can't, I mean, unless we just say everybody's making the same amount and we'll have to do, I mean, we can make it very simple, say everybody gets paid the same amount as this year, and we'll do budget cuts to cover the increasing costs throughout the district. But I, my belief is that we should have something to bring back and put in place for next year. And, I mean, I think it's also important to not look at this as short-term. This is not something just for next year or the following year. We need to look long-term, the next 10 years and the future of our district. What do we want to attract? How do we want to attract teachers? What do we want our reputation to be? So, it is a long-term thing, but I do think we need to get it put in place for next year.
Okay. So, the board has determined that we want to have a different compensation package. You, as the chief executive officer of our organization, I would think, would put something together and bring it to us. Does that make sense? You know, we've given you a vision, you're going to execute the vision. You can execute it the best way you know how. It started out, you wanted a committee of board members. Now, you've done some more research, you want, you want to head in a different direction you think will give us a quicker, better solution, more flexible solution. Is that a bad thing? It'll ultimately come back to the board.
Right. You stated well.
I don't know.
Yes?
The bad thing in my mind is pretty much all the committee members are going to stay the same, except the board members are being removed from that committee. And I don't see a problem with what Mr. Meyer said, that if the Compensation Committee meets two or three times and comes up with what they think are the most viable options and brings that to the board, and then we send it to the administration for more work, that's fine. But it was the board itself that, as I understand it, that decided to set up the two committees with three board members each, plus additional committee members for the Compensation Committee, which had included the administration members that had knowledge of, you know, the teaching strategies and compensation and that sort of thing. So, my objection is that, you know, this is going to move forward without, simply just without board members. And it was, as I understand it, the board originally that asked board members to be involved, and we do represent the largest constituency in the school district.
Just so you know, I am looking out for the constituency, the largest, I mean, I'm looking out for the taxpayers. John Mack speaks to it all the time as part of it. I wouldn't suggest that the committee is going to look the same. It's not just going to be central office administrators. It just, it just won't. It needs to be much more diverse than a...
And if I am... Go ahead, please.
Conceptually, I don't know that it's the board's... We represent the taxpayers, and ultimately, we'll make the final decision based on what we feel is best for the community. But the execution of the concept is the administrator's job. Phil's the chief administrator. I don't know that it's our job to nut and bolt the thing together. We have to let him have the flexibility, create an organization, get the stakeholders that are going to take the cuts and take the benefits, and create a system that they think will generate the best teachers for the district. They're going to have to decide. I think that's a valuable asset, to have teachers on that thing, to tell us what it is a teacher wants. It's not all about money. We keep talking about money because that's what we can see and understand, but I don't know that money is the ultimate driving force why people change jobs. So, I think we have to, in my, in my mind, we have to give Phil the latitude to do this. He's the chief administrator. He carries out our vision. That's our vision, to have this compensation package. How would, how would, the nuts and bolts of it, that's Phil's, in my, in my view, or whoever Phil is, whoever that guy is sitting in that chair.
Before I ask you to speak, unless I misunderstood you, I don't see how board members would not be involved. You spoke of a committee of just excluding board members, and I don't, I don't understand that that's what it would be made up. We would never be excluded, like, we're never going to exclude the people sitting over at that table, or we're all concerned about serving the young people with the dollars that are given to us by the taxpayer. Now, please, you had your hand up.
I don't disagree with you, Tom. My main point in the beginning was if the majority of board members wanted to move in that direction, that's fine, but I didn't hear that initially. It was just all of a sudden, the committee seemed like it was disappearing, and there was no discussion prior to that.
Right. I don't, I would agree. But I think, what I've been wrestling with from the beginning is what is, what is the board's role? And we seem to get into this management role, and I don't know that that's our role. I think our role is to say, we need to compete. Our school district needs to compete for teachers. That's the reality of it. Somehow, everybody's going to do it with less money. The best people to figure it out, might not be the board, per se, to figure the nuts and bolts of it out. It might be the people in the trenches doing the job, and the administrators and whatever. How are the superintendent? He's the guy that, where the buck stops. We give him the vision, he carries it out. And if we aren't happy with it, then we talk to him. We can't go, you know, talking to everybody in town. And I think we have to give him that support, if that's what he wants, that's the way he wants to approach it, to approach it and approach it quickly, and we'll know in the next month or two whether it's working.
Michael?
To add to what Mr. Deroz said, I believe the board role is to insist on some things in the process, and those things, from my perspective, are that the effort be aligned with our goals, that whatever organization is proposed, that it be in furtherance of our goals, and that you prove that to us, that there be a broad set of stakeholders involved in appropriate proportions to their knowledge, and that there be experts at the table who know something about it, who've done it before. And, and so, I, you know, you have the experts, you brought in the consultant, you know, you know, we've told you more stakeholders than teachers. Certainly, you need teachers there, and it needs to be in alignment with our, what we do has to be in furtherance of our goals.
One else has her hand up. I'm going to ask you to repeat. I think you have three statements on that thing. Read those, read those three statements again, please.
Hire and retain the best staff, pay high-performing staff at a higher level, and fit within the financial structure of the district and future projected funding.
To me, that summarizes what we've been talking about. And I really would like to compliment the board members, because this has been a very healthy discussion. I believe everyone has been able to put their thoughts on the table. And I think I'm hearing it, I think it's a direction, and I think Mr. Deroz has stated it very well. We are giving the charge to our superintendent to proceed with the job that we have hired him to do. Would anyone disagree? Okay, I think we have our direction, or, excuse me, you have your direction to do. Excuse me for pointing my finger at you. That's rude. Okay? We have one more item, please. District Development Plan for 2011-12.
One of the, for the past two years, we've been having a district development plan and then reporting out at the end of the year. And basically, this is what we put together at the beginning of the year, bringing it last year, it was approved by the board, and at this point, I would, I'm proposing this as the District Development Plan for 11-12, and also looking for some feedback. Again, we keep the same four goals. This will be the third year in a row that we keep the same, or fourth, third or fourth year in a row, we keep the same four goals, but also under the initiatives. I'll just try to highlight some of the changes and some of the differences. The secondary scheduling, that will bring a proposal to the board this year. We have the JK Science Review, which will also involve some science lab work at the middle schools and high schools. Our evaluation system, the teacher and principal evaluation system will be reviewed along with, to align with the state, the state plan, the state is currently looking at doing a statewide system for teachers and principals. Grading transformation, start looking at the process of value-incurring current practices in relationship to student learning, and that's not to be confused with changing necessarily from A, B, C, D, but really looking at what does grading mean and how does it impact. And that's starting out next Tuesday, next Tuesday? Opening day, the 30th, I'm sorry, with our staff, and having Tom Guske, who is an expert in that, talking to our staff members. New learning environments, I think, looking at online, exploration of an online charter school, and further work in, which also involves further work in our hybrid courses and evaluating the effectiveness of it. I know we've had some online classes being taught by our own teachers this summer, and then really doing some assessment of whether or not we're getting what we want out of those. I think a critical component under ongoing LRP initiatives, better PLCs, and that's really what we're trying to do, is continue to improve our professional learning communities and not losing that focus. I think it's important we can step up to our staff and say, "We're not adding, it's not this year's new thing. This is consistency from year to year, and we're just trying to get better at it." Wisconsin Comprehensive Counseling Model, 100% of our students and parents in grades 5, 8, and 11 will be invited and encouraged to participate in the planning conferences. I think we saw the feedback on those was very positive. ACT, the Plan and Explorer are all in place, and we'll start using that data this year. Start looking at the exploration of a STEM charter school for grades 6 through 8, either as an extension of our current one or a standalone program, and just the exploration of it at this point. Also, I think that, one of the things in here regarding summer school, the Recreation and Technology Department actively contribute to the improvement. I think it's time to start looking at summer school as not an add-on, but rather a critical component of what we do. We had over half of our students taking summer school, but I think operationally, we need to address it as part of a more structured program. In other words, some of our year-round people might be shifting duties into support summer school versus just kind of trying to nickel-and-dime it around and just to manage to get things done. I think it's grown large enough that we need to take, take a step back and say, "Let's reorganize, make sure we have places and pieces in place from HR through administrative support, through teacher support, professional development, and so on." So, that's one piece. The Employee Handbook, Compensation Restructure. Also, I mentioned Superintendent Advisory Committee. We've kind of already moved on to say, I think we're going to call it a District Advisory Committee. Have all, all the directors will be involved with that. An interview process or an application process for staff members to be involved on that. And then also, an international baccalaureate program. I'd like to begin the exploration of a future IB program, whether that's at the elementary, middle, or high school. Certainly has not been determined, but there is interest from some of our principals to start exploring an IB program. And I would ask for any feedback or thoughts from board members on this.
One thing, you mentioned when the teachers are coming back, what is the day the children are coming back?
September 1st. It's on the calendar every year, same September 1st.
Thank you.
If we can get that changed, I'd be happy. It should be in session right now.
And I think some of the young people would like to be back. Board members, yes, Mr. Croner?
Thank you. I find this document very useful for keeping track of what's going on and what to expect in the district. I'm going to start with a couple of minor things, and then I'm going to finish with the major goal. My question about the IB program, is that something that would replace the AP program in the high schools, or is that something that would be?
No, I think you can, you can run both of them. I guess that would be, if I'm, if I'm called to it right now, I would say, I would prefer to have an international baccalaureate program along with AP coursework as well, and have it where they can take either or.
I'm going to jump to the goals. One of my, I like our major goals, and, but one of my major concerns is our district-focused reading. And we spent a considerable amount of time developing the major goal, and last year especially, adding the phrase "grade-level literacy" to the goal, that is critical to success for all students in all content areas at all levels. And what concerns me, and concerned me last year, is reading is our district focus, but we don't have a reading goal. So, out of the four main goals, it seems to me that if reading is our focus, we should have a goal that relates to reading, like, what are we shooting for? And particularly this year, when we added the term "grade-level literacy," we received a report on reading scores, but that report did not include grade-level information. So, one thing I would like to explore in the future, maybe at another meeting, is, you know, what is, what do we mean by grade-level literacy, and how are we going to measure it? You know, so what should we expect as a measurement for that next year? Is that something that we expect students to be at a certain level every year, that we're trying to get every student to second-grade level, third-grade level, fourth-grade level, or does it mean something different? Because I always assumed that it meant we were trying to get students, all students, up to a specific level of reading ability, you know, at each grade level. So, I'd like to have some additional discussion on that. And to me, that could be added as a goal. The other thing, and I don't know how to approach this, it would be helpful for me for each of the main goals, particularly the first two, where we're talking about achievement of subgroups and MAP, achievement of students through the MAP assessment, if we could address each of these individually at an upcoming meeting, looking at the data that we received in cursory form in much more detail. And my idea here is, with these goals, it would be helpful for me to see, what are the action steps for these? For example, for the subgroups, ELL, ethnic groups, students with disabilities, you know, they're still very low achieving in our district compared to what our goal is. And, you know, what are we going to do different based on our previous results? What are the action steps in these that'll be different from previous? And I think they're really good goals, but it would be helpful, I think, for the board, maybe in the next two or three or four meetings, to address each of these, just to see, what is the specific data that addresses each one of these, and what are we going to do different to try to fix the part of it that we don't think worked as well as we wanted it to? But other than that, I like this document, but I think we need some more specific goals for the at-risk students and for reading in particular.
I like what you're stating about the at-risk. Not that we're doing a poor job, I didn't hear you say that, but it, how can we even improve on that to help those young people move, to become more successful? Board members, yes, please, please.
Just a little feedback on two of the items. Under initiatives, first off, secondary scheduling. As I said when the presentation was made to us a few weeks ago, it sounds like there's already a decision that there's going to be a change, and I think it's a little early to assume that that's necessary. So, I would just encourage you to not make a change for change's sake, that there be a valid, data-driven reason if we're going to have a recommendation to change our schedule, not go into it assuming that we need to do that. Secondly, on projects, I have a question about your Superintendent Advisory Committee, because the stated project here is to establish a committee of employees. Now, I don't know if there's been a Superintendent's Parents Advisory Committee over the last few years, but certainly in the past, that was a committee of people from throughout the community, which provided information and feedback to the superintendent. And having been on that committee, I think it was a very valuable tool. I would not like to see a Superintendent's Advisory Committee, which did not include community members. So, I would, again, I don't know exactly what your intent is in having that committee, but I do ask that you consider having it be not just employees, but also community members as well.
And the, the community, or the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee, we kind of changed the name to SPM, that is still in place, and we've changed the focus a little bit, and we use it to share information and get feedback on different components, and I certainly, I think there's some critical pieces that this year will need involvement from our parent group on as well.
Thank you.
Mary Jo?
Just a comment on the secondary scheduling, consideration of change. When I look at everything on here, things like the IB program, the new learning environments, the, excuse me, online courses and those kinds of things, I would actually bump those into that same category as coming up with a secondary scheduling program. In other words, build that around some of those things, instead of having those out there independently on their own, and begin, or, I don't know if we're going to begin or begin again, the scheduling work based on those things that we've identified as being important. Because I don't believe probably those specifics were part of the committee discussion. And there's a couple of things on here. Like I said, the IB, the online, there was something else on here.
I think a big one that fits into it is...
Project Lead the Way, all of that. You know, if you make, take those out as separate goals, I mean, obviously, they're still goals, but if you're seriously going to be looking at scheduling changes, and I think Mr. Meyer has mentioned this quite a few times... scheduling changes, and I think Mr. Meyer has mentioned this quite a few times, you know, first you decide what it is we want to be able to accomplish and then how we can do it. So just some thoughts.
The compensation restructure, I think also fits, that's critical to the, any kind of scheduling we do as well. Do the decision of how much, how many classes teachers are teaching and how many teachers are needed.
Michael?
Sorry. The, um, thing that's different about scheduling as opposed to most other things is that you can practice. You could identify two scheduling models and you could take the counseling model, the counseling plan that we have for all of the children. And, for example, one stakeholder at the table would be student services because a freshman has a plan from student services and from the counselors as to what courses they would like to take in their high school career. And you could fully run the model for two different proposed schedule types and determine which of the two models has the fewer conflicts with respect to the student's goals. And it would not be speculation. It would be hard cold data as to which model best serves the students. So I ask that you consider that process, that it could be done. You could actually run the numbers on a proposed schedule or two proposed schedules. It would be quite an effort. It would be an expensive effort. But considering the long-term costs to implementing any scheduling model, the paybacks could be significant with respect to what we can do or cannot do for the students.
I just would like to ask you to think about something and it may be totally, you have some good reasons, but have you ever considered inviting a student or two to serve on any of your committees? The reason I ask that, I serve on the Ultaosa Youth Commission and I am constantly amazed at the work that these young people in its grades eight through 12, there's, serve on the youth commission. I'm constantly amazed at what these young people come up with and the service they contribute to the community. So I just ask, think about it. It may be a seed planted that we could, our main goal is to teach them the government operation within the community, serving the Ultaosa community. And that's what we are about. So, any further comment or question?
Just, just a comment on that, the strongest voice, and you'll see that on here regarding diversity. The Equity and Excellence Team will focus on achievement in social gaps related to diversity. Mr. Croner, when you were talking about WKCE, that, that's a critical piece for us. I mean, that is, that is a gap and I, I don't dismiss your idea. I think it's a good idea that we go more in depth on these goals and the results and how well we're doing. I think that's important. There's a piece. We're not doing real well. But the student impact that we had with our spirit group, which is a group of students, I think, I think anybody will tell you that we've had more impact in a couple of months in the students actually doing the work than adults and more impact across the district. So we're going to continue that group. And you're exactly right. Sometimes, and oftentimes, our students come up with some really good ideas and have some great impact on us as adults in the system to make change, so.
And many times, they are more, have set higher goals than we as adults do. They have high expectations. So, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Is there any community comment? And seeing no, community members here, there are none. Pardon me? Oh, Mr., well, you're here because you're a member of a staff. We need to have you here covering, we have two individuals here tonight. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and reconvene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute S. 19.85 subsection 1 and C. to discuss the superintendent's evaluation with the superintendent. And the motion is in order, please.
So moved.
Mrs. Randall?
Second.
And Mrs. Fee. The roll call, please, is, Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And let's take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:45.